This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, August 29th. Please stand for an invocation led by Margaret Ritchie, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Before I start, I just want to say, Margaret Ritchie, I've been serving the Chaplain as a Chaplain since 2009. And as of July 18th, I am officially a Mobile citizen. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, acknowledging your sovereignty over our lives in this magnificent city. Lord, thank you for the leaders you have placed in authority who guide us through challenging times. We ask for your abundant blessings upon them, their families, granting them wisdom, discernment, humility, to make decisions that benefit the entire city. We lift up the city employees before you, Lord. May you bless their diligent effort and tireless dedication as they serve the needs of the city. Strengthen them and grant them the resources they need to fulfill their responsibility with excellence and compassion. We thank you, Lord, for elevating this city to a position of leadership within our state. May it continue to be a beacon of progress, innovation, and unity. As we navigate uncertain days, we pray for peace to prevail in every corner of this city. Guard us from harm, both seen and unseen, and surround us with your divine protection. We offer our praises and surrender our hopes and fears. May your presence be felt strongly in this city, guiding us toward a future filled with justice, harmony, and prosperity. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our Tuesday, August 29th meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, including cell phones, at this time, please put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign and indicating the resolution, the ordinance, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give their name. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 12:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address to the council must be identified and pertaining to the City of Mobile business. Any person that has not given a proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to address the council on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. Two minutes, a bell will sound at the end of two minutes. One minute remaining after the second bell, excuse me, second buzzer, to mean that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no person to address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. And to maintain the form, there will be no public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of August 22nd.
And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communication, Mr. Mayor Simpson.
Good morning.
Morning.
Appreciate everyone being here this morning. I don't know if you feel like me, but it was good to see the welcomed rain last night. Wake up and seeing the grass and the flowers all wet instead of having to pull hoses and sprinklers around the yard. Want to bring you up to date on the annexation meetings that we're having. We continue to host those meetings out at Creekwood Church on Schillinger's Road. And the idea is that we're meeting with all the residents out there so that they will have a clear understanding of when are the services that we will be providing, when they start, and how we actually will be implementing them. We have a meeting this Thursday, the 31st. It'll be at 5:15 PM. Then we'll have another one on September 5th, and then on September 7th. So there'll be three more meetings with the community and individuals out there. Of all those three dates at the time, at 5:15 at Creekwood Church. Anybody that's wanting more information regarding those meetings, all the services provided, can go to the, just visit our website, citymobile.org, and most of it, almost all of it, is there, except for the days that trash and garbage will be picked up. We've not completed that part of the process, but as soon as we know that, we'll be posting those so that if you live in the newly annexed areas, you'll know what day your garbage and trash will be picked up. On another note, we opened North McGregor Avenue last Friday afternoon. And this was a complete rebuild of just a short section of McGregor, probably a quarter of a mile, not even quite a quarter of a mile long. Well, it actually is a quarter of a mile if you go to round about there. But I'm glad to say, and this is a very unusual announcement when it comes to infrastructure, and that is that we opened it five months early. That almost never happens. So, kudos to our engineers, everybody, to John G. Walton, everybody that had a part of that. It just was a very collaborative effort, and so that made a lot of people happy to be able to open one ahead of time. The, we do have another project going on, McGregor. It's the South McGregor Project, which extends from the Dolphin Street intersection at McGregor down to Airport Boulevard in McGregor. So that was continued, owned probably another year for that contract. Anyway, progress is being made, although it's not on my talking points, I'll say that on Ziegler Boulevard, from University Boulevard all the way around to where the dam is coming out of Langin Lake, we hoping that by September 15th, or close to that, all the cones, everything will be removed there. So the construction from University to the dam at Langin Lake, all that part of the construction for Ziegler will be completed. And that's just trying again to continue that so people can plan how they are going to change the traffic patterns. I see that we have a lot of people here signed up to ask questions or make comments, really, making comments about the body cam footage. So at this time, I would call on the City Attorney, Ricardo Woods, to make a statement.
Thank you, Mayor. So in reference to focus on Mr. Dallas and the body cam, first and foremost, I want to say anytime there's a loss of life, it is tragic indeed, and we give our condolences to the Dallas family. We are in the process and have submitted this body cam along with other evidence to, of course, the grand jury, well, to the DA's office, and they'll be presenting to the grand jury. And then, of course, there's a corresponding federal investigation in addition to the MPD investigation, so it's tripartite. But in reference to the grand jury submission, we're not allowed to give that information out because you have an ongoing criminal investigation. As soon as that criminal investigation is concluded, it's our view that the family and their attorney is entitled to see it, and we will sit down with them and allow them to view it at the conclusion of the criminal investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. The next time...
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Mr. Woods, can I ask you a question? And I know that we discussed this on last week, but just for the public knowledge, usually how long does it take for the grand jury to deliberate?
Yeah, that's right. It depends, but what I will tell you now, we are specifically waiting on toxicology to come back, and as soon as we have that, we'll be able to probably move forward. You never know exactly how long it's going to take depending on the backups or not. But we expect that it will happen this term. We will know something this term, and as soon as we know, we'll let you all know, and we'll contact the family's attorney, send out with them.
Can you identify a term?
So I'd imagine it's going to be a matter of months.
In this term, meaning this quarter, I mean, that's what I'm...
More than likely this quarter. Right?
All right, thank you.
Next, I'd like to call on Scott Kearney, who will introduce the Administrative Services Employee of the Month, Julie Patronas. Between he and Joe Snowden, they'll make that introduction.
Well, good morning, and I'm proud to announce that we have Julie Patronas as our July Employee of the Month for Admin Services. And I know on a personal note, she's really helped me out in her very last-minute projects. And Scott will elaborate more why she's our Employee of the Month.
Hey, I would just like to say, 24 years that Julie's been with the city, she is a, she's an excellent worker. And I can't think of a day that she hasn't beat me to work. But she's done a lot lately, especially with the annexation project, and even now with the annexation and them becoming part of the city, those neighborhoods. GIS has been doing a lot of work. Julie's been a big part of that, collecting all the information that a lot of these departments need in order to go forward with these services and kind of transition that area into the city. So really appreciate the work you've done, Julie.
So many of our citizens probably don't realize the significance of what a GIS department can do to help the administration, the city council, make better informed decisions. The information they have and the ability to map it and explain it is just paramount to us making informed decisions to do the right thing for the City of Mobile. So Julie, thank you, to you and Pat and everybody in the department. So thank y'all very much for what you do. Labor Day weekend's coming up. I hope everybody has a safe and enjoyable Labor Day, and we look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you.
Monthly finance report.
Good morning.
Morning.
I look forward to doing the budget presentation this afternoon at the 1:00 meeting this morning. I'm going to talk about the July general fund financial, monthly financial statement. In our total revenues and transfers in for July, we had $25,399,373. We budgeted $21,303,208, so that's a $4 million budget variance to the good. For expenses for July, we had $25,624,966. And we budgeted $25,554,812, so we were over by $70,000. Our net loss for the month was $225,593, but we had budgeted, a budgeted net loss of $4,251,604, so we did better than expected. And we continue to do better than expected. Year-to-date, our total revenues are 200... Year-to-date, our total revenues are $288,990,856 against a budget of $260,396,37. So we are $28,000.5 to the good. For expenses, year-to-date actual is $276,975,133 against a budget of $300.5 million. So we are still not spending what we projected that we would spend, even though they're trying. Most of this, as we discussed last month, is due to vacancies. Also, I would like to point out, in July, we transferred $2 million from the unassigned fund balance to help with the pay-go program. Sales tax continues to outperform what was budgeted. We had a positive monthly sales tax variance of $2.2 million and a year-to-date variance of almost $12 million. Business licenses are up, year-to-date, almost $3.7 million against budget. Interest income continues to outperform last year because interest rates are higher than they were a year ago. As far as expenses go, the one expense that y'all need to be aware of that is over what we projected is the jail and the youth center. And these are expenses that we do not have any control over, but they continue to go up. And so, you know, that's something that we're going to have to look at in the future because they just keep on up and up. The, you know, we have had a remarkable summer of robust consumer spending, and the financial markets have been resilient, but it is widely expected that the U.S. economy will slow down in the coming months. Of course, we always think it's going to slow down, and for the last few years, it has not. But the Fed Chairman Jerome Powell said on Friday, there may be significant further drag in the pipeline that the economy has not felt yet. And he continued that it's unclear when those effects would take hold. One indicator of an alarming problem is the escalation of credit card debt. We still have inflation that we're dealing with, and the student loan repayments will resume in October. All of these should affect consumer spending, but only time will tell. So we continue, FY 2023 has been a very good year financially. We will continue to monitor it, and as we go into '24, you know, we will see if the trend continues up. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Dave.
Ms. Sapp, to go back to the jail and the youth center.
Yep.
My recollection is that our agreement, and I guess it's with the county on both of those.
That's correct.
Is that we will pay a percentage of the expenses associated with those two entities.
That's correct.
So as you said, we really don't have any, since we don't operate them, we really don't have any control over what that, what our share of that expense is. And I don't need the answer today, but what I would like at some point is to know the term of those two agreements with the county.
The term, like...
Yeah, when they, but what is the term? I mean, they don't go on forever, do they?
Yeah, they do.
She's correct, at least with the jail, it's in perpetuity.
Right, that's correct. So yeah, it's, it does not have, doesn't have an end date, not during our lifetime anyway.
Well, that's certainly not the answer I was looking for, but thank you very much.
Question, Mr. President. During the annexation period, when we were going over all of these numbers, and we were looking at those numbers based on what the share of the jail was coming from the PJ, I asked the question, then, is there anything we can do legally between the city and the county to alleviate ourselves with paying such a large portion or percentage of the cost of operating the jail when there are now other municipalities within the county that are strong enough to pay their fair share?
Short answer is yes, there's some options, but not because there are other municipalities. But we do have other options.
Have we started a process to take advantage of those other options? And if so, how long before we see any relief from those?
We haven't started those conversations with the county in recent times, but I'd imagine they'll be starting up quickly based on these conversations when we're going forward. But it's something that we'd have to do to work hand-in-hand with the county, not, it's not one-sided for the city.
Well, I guess my question is, is that will it, it's obvious it won't be in this budgeting cycle.
No.
But will it be in the next budgeting cycle? Because that number's somewhere around $10 million, if I remember correctly, $13 million.
And it continues to grow. Based on these conversations, I'd imagine there will be something going forward next budget cycle.
Our year-to-date budget variance is a negative $1.6 million for the jail right now.
Jesus.
The youth center is a negative $571,000.
Another council member.
Yeah, one last question, Mr. President. In the budget, I just saw this number from July, $73,103,953. In the budget, through, I guess it's going to show through the end of August, I mean, through the end of July in the budget, where do I find that number?
Okay, the 71 that you're talking about, where did you see it?
The 73. The unassigned fund balance available.
Oh, okay.
Did you re-portion those to the departments and individuals and non-hires, or is this number accounted for in moving forward into the next budget year as...
Okay, this is the estimated unassigned fund balance as of July 31st, 2023. It does not include our projected losses for August and September of this year, but that'll be in this afternoon's presentation. And we could talk more about that, but this is not divvied up between the costs.
So I just don't remember showing it as a line item in the budget somewhere, or did I miss it?
It's not a line item in the budget.
So it's, you prorate it through individual lines and other places? How did you bring it forward into '23, '24?
The fund balance, the fund balance is shown on the balance sheet side, and the budget is the income and expense side.
So, show me when we get upstairs.
I will, I will. I'll be happy.
There's questions I have, maybe opportunities.
I will note that in the new budget, the reserve is going to increase $5.5 million for '24.
By how much?
5.5.
5.5.
Another council member. Ms. Gregory.
Just to follow up, Celia, this may not actually be yours to answer, but since we've had a little bit of discussion about the jail and the need to look toward the next budget to maybe do something about what we here consider some unfair cost. How is that divided up between the City of Mobile, Mobile County, and other municipalities? How much is the percentage that we put in, and what is that based on?
So there's an intergovernmental agreement for the jail specifically, it's a cost sharing. It varies. I tell you, we'd have to look at it from year to year, but after, I said, outside of the county, the City of Mobile is by far the largest contributor. And that's because of some nuances in agreement.
I thought it was a fixed percentage of the cost of operating the jail.
I can't remember if it's 30 or 35.
Regardless of the inmate property.
Right, but, so it's not just the fixed amount, there's also a specific amount in dealing with the definition. So here lies the problem. The intergovernmental agreement itself requires that any, any person who is arrested by Mobile Police, whether it's in the jurisdiction or in the city, is condition, or it's a felony or misdemeanor, that person is classified as a municipal prisoner, right? That's, that's in large part why it's so much. And it's close to a third, but over and over again, you have people who are classified by, by the document as municipal prisoners, when under state law, they would be classified as county prisoners.
And this goes back again to the police jurisdiction, right?
Say again?
This goes back again to the police jurisdiction.
Oh, it goes back even more so than that. I mean, it's not just dealing with the police jurisdiction, it deals with the county itself. So even if somebody's arrested by MPD in any given, any given location, whether it's on state property, in the police jurisdiction, or in the city, they're still considered our prisoner. So it's mostly anybody that MPD elects to arrest. Okay, thank you.
Gregory.
Yeah, I think what I'm looking for is more of a, how much does the City of Mobile pay? Is it based on percentage of our prisoners? And then how much would, like, Saraland, Chickasaw, whomever, but they also pay a percentage based on their number of prisoners going to...
I don't know that there are other corresponding agreements, but I know it's a fixed price. I think it's 35%. We haven't looked back at it, but that number continues to rise.
Okay, it should be exact.
But we can get your exact number.
Question. At the time of the intergovernmental agreement, some of these municipalities did not exist in the state they do now. I believe they were towns. Is that not correct?
That's probably accurate.
Right, and now we have four other, I want to say, solid municipalities that stretch all the way up to and above Mount Vernon. We're talking about a whole county where we're paying a third of the cost as opposed to just the municipality. And that's where the, I consider the unbalanced to be. I mean, I know that all of us have talked about this before, but there has to be a way to revisit this simply because of the fact that we're paying for Mount Vernon, MacIntosh, Creola, Satsuma, Chickasaw. We're paying for every little town that does not contribute their fair share to this when, when, you know, at this point, some of them have the resources to do so.
Fair statement.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Penn.
Ms. Woods, what year was the intergovernmental agreement?
We'll have to look back at it. It would have been, it would have been either the late 80s or early 90s. But we can look and find that specific year for you. It's, I mean, it's in it. We've been dealing with this issue for quite some time.
Thank you.
Another one of us. Thank you so much. Tom Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
Somebody.
Second.
And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave-of-the-noise ordinance on October 4th through the 6th in Marty Braugh Park, October 14th on Texas Street, October 21st on Texas Street, September 23rd on MacArthur Street, and December 2nd in Arlington Park, August 31st and September 1st. This is on Hertel Street, October 21st in Municipal Park.
Somebody.
And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to rezone property located at 1408 St. Stevens Road and 212 North Lafayette Street from R1 and B2 to B1.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium and address the council by giving us your name on this particular item. Anyone present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
There's a public hearing to rezone property located at the north side of Oshel Road, 340 feet east of Cosgrove Drive from R1 to B1.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name. Anyone present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
There's a public hearing to modify a planned unit development located at 2970 Mag Bay Drive North and 3030 Mag Bay Drive North.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name and your address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sabrina Mass. Councilwoman Smarjus would like more information. Can you elaborate on that unit development plan? I'm not quite sure what that plan is and what it entails.
I'll give that information to you.
Okay.
I'll give you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
There's a public hearing to rezone property located at 3901 Cottage Hill Road from B1 to R1.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this particular item? If not, this particular item is closed.
There's a public hearing to fix the cost of demolition of structures at 906 Donald Street. at nine oh six Donald Street, one oh seven Randolph Street, eighteen fifty-three Tolman Avenue, six oh four Ta-ta Street, fifty fourteen Karen Road.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name. If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Michael Pierce.
Good morning.
Morning.
Michael Pierce. Do I need to state your address before we go through that? I just wanted to apprise the council of, uh, just a couple of quick things um, as it relates to the Mobile Housing Authority and its transition. The recovery agreement, which is a statutory agreement that we've been under since twenty eighteen, we're about eighty percent completed with that document now. Last time I was here, I mentioned to you that the voluntary compliance agreement that we have with FATO dealing with fair housing, that, that has been satisfied and taken care of. Also, as it relates to relocation of tenants that are impacted by the eventual demolition of Thomas James Place, RV Taylor Plaza, and Boykin Towers, we're about fifty percent complete as it relates to relocating those families. There are approximately a hundred and sixty-three households remaining that need to be relocated, and so our team is still working with them to find housing within the community. Several of the families have identified some units, primarily elderly individuals, and they'll go to some of our elderly facilities that we presently have. As everyone knows, there is a severe shortage of affordable housing, not just here in Mobile, but across the country. And so, um, we know that the city has a very, um, robust plan and ideas as it relates to a thousand homes east of sixty-five by twenty twenty-six. And we know that obviously bringing those units online, they don't presently exist. For the most part, it'll be new construction and/or, uh, some rehabilitation of units that are vacant. Uh, it would be helpful to get a sense of what the timeline is on that and where those units might be located so that we can start identifying who those developers are, uh, so that we can have our individuals who are working with our clients start identifying locations, school districts, et cetera, so we can start planning to try to program some of our vouchers, uh, in those locations. Uh, and so I, it would be helpful if we could get some information and update on that. And that concludes my update.
Thank you so much for coming down, Mr. Pierce. Uh, my question is, you have not been communicating with Mr. Jamie Roberts?
Excuse me?
You have not been communicating with Jamie Roberts, you know, getting that information that you asked for.
Uh, no, sir. So what we, what we generally do is, we submit, uh, pretty much on a monthly basis, which you guys are part of those email blasts as well, monthly updates in terms of where things are and, and where they're going. We've not received any subsequent reports from the city as it relates to what, what they're doing. But that could be remedied.
Okay. Because I, I believe that they come to y'all meetings every month, if I'm not mistaken, representing from the city.
That's correct.
Yeah, that department. And that department pretty much is, if I'm, if I'm not correct, or if I am correct, that department is the one that's really leading that area that you asking about. So I would just ask you just to make sure that you're really communicating, you know, with Mr. Jamie Roberts and, uh, you know, make sure that your answers, your question gets answered and everything.
Sir.
Any questions from the council?
Sure, Mr. President. Um, uh, Mr. Pierce, um, where are we in the transfers of property with Thomas James and RV and Barkin Tower?
Um, so we have an executed LOI. Uh, we're waiting, uh, at this particular moment for a, a letter, I understand, that's coming from the city of Mobile uh, as it relates to the right-of-way at those developments. When the subdivisions were created and everything was, uh, recorded, the city was going to maintain the public right-of-way. Uh, when actuality, that really didn't transpire. And so when the Airport Authority surveyor went out to survey the property, they excluded the public right-of-way. And so that took out about twenty acres of the overall acreage, uh, that's part of the deal. And so, uh, we went back and said, that's incorrect. Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, the Airport Authority has spoken with the city and that the city will be sending a letter, um, to us as well as the Airport Authority indicating that they are not exercising any rights as it relates to the public right-of-way as opposed to us having to go through an entire vacation process, application. All of those things takes a lot of time. Uh, and so, it's my understanding that that letter is forthcoming and, and should be arriving at any moment. And once this, once that happens, HUD is ready, everything's done, uh, they're just waiting on us to confirm the final acreage. Once that's done, uh, we'll get the authorization from headquarters to close the deal. So I anticipate, if there are no delays, likely late September, mid-October, everything will be done.
Uh, 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 whom, who is the, between whom is the LOI? Is it the Housing Board, Housing Board and Airport Authority?
Airport Authority.
So am I to assume that the Housing Board has sold all of RV Taylor and Thomas James and Boykin Tower to the Airport Authority?
You are correct.
So what about the redevelopment of residential property over there as part of the plan, original plan? Is there not to be any?
The original plan that we presented to the community, the city, elected officials, included a hundred and eight, a hundred and ninety-one units that we wanted to preserve on the northeast end of RV Taylor Plaza and approximately ninety-two units, uh, at Duval Street, um, at Thomas James Place. It was in response to, uh, communications that we received, both from the city as well as elected officials, both local and state, and some community leaders. And so we said, hey, we can be good partners, we'll go back, we'll petition HUD, and we will do this. Then later on, we received communication that that isn't what want, they wanted to happen. And as a result of it, um, we said, fine. We'll do whatever it is that we need to do. We wanna be a good partner within the community, and it was our original intent to sell it all in the first place. And so HUD came back and said, okay, if that's what you guys wanna do, then that's not a problem. So the preservation of those units were for those units, uh, individuals who didn't want to move. Um, and so the only way we could do it was to preserve them and take them out of the deal. Once that, uh, was no longer the case, then the entirety, roughly three hundred and thirty acres, um, is part of the ultimate LOI that was submitted to HUD along with all of the other documentation.
That's, that's interesting. Uh, there's a concern there. I don't know what the administration's plan is or what the partnership is with the housing, I mean, with the Airport Authority and maybe the, uh, the president of the council may know it's his district, but with the passing and then the Housing Board and HUD no longer requiring the one-for-one requirement, then how do we replace the, the housing stock? If there's not an adequate partnership there? Is there any partnership? You, uh, it seem like, i- is there any partnership there with either the Airport Authority, with the Housing Board, or us to, to make sure that where we're about to take, if it's six hundred units, you know, six hundred times two is twelve hundred, so it's probably four people. So we're looking at about twenty-four hundred people alone that are somewhat displaced or we're moving them out of the area that they're familiar with. Is there a plan, uh, uh, in place to help alleviate that?
I can't speak for the conversations that the city may have had with the Airport Authority, but what I do know is that there has been some conversation with regard to some acreage being carved out that the city of Mobile has been speaking with them about for some housing preservation and development. Now, so when you mentioned the one-for-one replacement, which is not, not a requirement here, um, what the housing author, the housing authority's role, and I've said this before, is we will have vouchers that we give to our clients who will go into the private marketplace to find housing. HUD is no longer funding housing the way it used to. I mean, I know everybody got comfortable with that, but that's just not the way it's done anymore. However, there are instances where we can partner with, and we're doing it, uh, right now. In fact, we're actually having a conversation about working with some of our developers who are gonna be redeveloping, uh, Central Plaza Towers and others about a partnership and doing something over on the acreage, the north, northern quadrant of Roger Williams, on former Roger Williams. City of Mobile has a recreational easement on the lower half of that, uh, which was in the flood plain, but the area above that, north of that, is buildable. So we're probably gonna end up with somewhere between eighty to a hundred units that will go in there. That's not presently programmed because it's not finalized, but we're having those conversations. In addition to that, then of course, apartment complexes and other partners throughout the community, as these units come online, as well as asking about the city's plan, we can then have our clients move into those areas. But there is no one-for-one replacement, uh, as it relates to those units.
Uh, one last question. Is there any additional resources, maybe financial, that the Housing Board can contribute to a development of affordable housing?
Are there any additional resources that?
I'm asking you for money.
I know. Well, you got fifty-eight million. Um, so you got a whole lot more than we have and, and a whole lot more than we'll have in any, in the foreseeable future. Um, but our contribution primarily right now, the simple answer is no. But the simple, the real answer is those vouchers are our contribution. Um, and so when you look at the development that's taking place at the former Mayne site, Maryvale Place, um, that's a hundred percent vouchers. That's, you know, that total contribution is gonna be over thirty million dollars uh, when you look at that contract and the number of units that are there and the families that it will house. There'll be other projects similar to that coming online as well, and that will be our, our contribution as well. But in terms of HUD giving us funds to invest in projects, no, they, they're not gonna do that.
And what about real property?
Real property? Um, real property is available and is planned to be developed, that's correct, yes. So there, there are scenarios where we could be a mix, a partner in the mix with developers, whether it's selling the land outright and, and being out of the deal but placing vouchers and/or being a part of the deal in terms of doing the long-term ground lease and participating in a developer fee, et cetera. So we're exploring all of those things, they're all on the table.
Thank you. Um, I'd like the, the chance to ask for an additional meeting with you if you would send me some times that you have available. I have a bunch of additional questions I'd like to ask, if at all possible.
Yeah, I, I would like to also join that meeting also, but just let me just get clarification. So the land is already have been sold?
No.
Okay.
The deal has not been finalized. HUD ultimately has to sign off on it. We're waiting on the response from the city as it relates to the infrastructure, um, and adding that acreage back into the total acreage that's being sold. But HUD has signed off on it, it's just waiting on us to get everything in order to them to sign off on it. And once that happens, then the deal will be consummated in relative short order.
So that, that is a concern that is really flowing through the community. And I guess that, I think I first heard that they, I think it was October first that the residents had to be out, and now it's extended. The concern is, is they gonna really be put out with no place to stay?
That's, that's, that's inaccurate. Uh, we've shared information with the residents, um, our actual residents. Um, we've placed this information on social media as well as our website. We've forwarded that information to you all as well. The timeframe that they were given initially was twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Not October, but twelve thirty-one twenty-three. That's the ideal, but the real number is we can't do any of those things. We can't put them out on the street or anything, we have to help them get relocated. And so therefore, it might be May of twenty-four before that happens, if that's what it takes. But no, no one will be placed out on the street.
Yeah, and that was, that was a big, that is a big concern and not to belittle, no residents over there, but a lot of them don't have internet, you know, um, I mean, I understand you say it's on the website.
And, and flyers, but now, so just so you understand, we actually meet with them individually. Everyone has a caseworker, and they meet with them face-to-face to go through this. Actually, if they don't have transportation, we drive them to places to find housing, to complete applications, and all of those things. They, this is literally handholding, one-on-one. Uh, and that is simply saying that we recognize that we have a huge responsibility to our clients. And many of them aren't accustomed to going out into the private marketplace, like many others are, to search for housing and do those things. They may not understand everything that's being given to them in terms of reading all of the documentation associated with it, what, what their responsibilities are. We have staff that work with them and hold their hands throughout that process. Some don't require as much handholding as others. And so, but no one is ever going to be placed out on the street, that's just simply not true. But I can understand the concern and the fear.
Mr. President?
Yes.
How you doing, Mr. Pierce?
I'm well.
That's great. I want, I had a question, I know you say you have a hundred and sixty families left, plus. Um, before the shutdown of all the different locations, how many families, um, were, are now disfranchised or moved or?
So we've moved about a hundred, about, roughly three hundred and twenty-ish families, so about a hundred and sixty have been moved and relocated already. And so this, these remaining households are the ones that are left. That's why I said we're about, right at about fifty percent, um, having, uh, helped families get relocated. Frankly, to be honest with you, if there was more housing stock out there, that number would be a lot lower, but there simply isn't. And one of the things that you have to remember is, we're competing against everybody else in the private marketplace for these units. We've actually had to raise the amount of monies that we will pay to help them with their rent, although their number can't go up, they can't be over thirty percent of their adjusted income, and that means we have to meet the difference. So we raised it to a hundred and twenty percent, uh, so that they can compete with everyone else in the marketplace because no landlord, um, generally is going to lease their place for less for altruistic reasons. They're in the, to make money, and we understand that. And so we've had to do that. But the correlation to that is, as we increase that number to help pay additional rent, in time, that means there are fewer and fewer people that you can help. Also, because it's a finite amount of resources that we have, but that is just something that we have to do to compete in this marketplace.
Um, it was a, today was just a, a concern for me to hear that some of the questions that you, you still have for the city, um, you know, I'm gonna question, you know, immediately that, yeah. We have these discussions to answer your questions, to, for the city to come together. I don't know where to disconnect, but we need it because we, we need our families to be prepared and have a plan in place. And so, you know, whatever need to take place to have a meeting, start creating these discussions, we need to do it as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President? Mr. Carroll?
Um, Mr. Pierce, does every one of the families currently in your care, are they eligible for a voucher?
Every family that's in, um, Thomas James Place and RV Taylor, they are eligible for, for vouchers, yes.
Uh, uh, my, my mind's just racing based on future opportunities in, in concepts. The mayor, the administration, and Jamie started the Hope Program, which uses vouchers for single-family housing. Uh, the question there would be, uh, property acquisition and where? But my question is, is would there be, and this is a question for committee later, would they have to qualify credit-wise, knowing that there was a voucher there? And what would be the length of the voucher? At what point does the federal government change? And as, you know, as I do, they change in the drop of a hat, and vouchers may change in the future, which then would leave them in disarray with mortgage payments. Um, but I, I, like, again, I really would like to sit down for a couple of hours and, and just, and, and let's talk about this because District One and District Two, we're gonna lose a huge portion of our population when this comes to an end. And if we have an, a, an availability of space and property where we can repopulate in other places, then I'd like to be able to do that with a proper program. then I'd like to be able to do that with a proper program in place.
I would just add that those conversations, by the way, have already happened with our HCV department and the city's department as relates to the HOPE program. And so they're actually working right now with clients to get them ready for many of the houses. I don't know what all the underwriting criteria are because I understand that correctly, the city is more or less the bank in this scenario. And so then they would have to determine what that is. But typically, what you're gonna find for the vast majority of our renters, they're not mortgage-ready at this particular point in time. And it's not necessarily that they may have poor credit, but their debt-to-income ratios may simply be way too high. And so there'll need to be some, obviously some, working with them to help get that lower, to get it to that place where the city would be comfortable in providing a unit for. But there's certainly opportunities to partner there.
Certain portion of that would have to be forgivable, maybe eighty percent AMI or whatever we'd have to do. I'm pretty sure we could write a program that accommodates that. I'm talking more of property acquisition in a partnership where you can help us all. And I'm also talking about an opportunity that's citywide as opposed to wherever else that we can make this work for our city. And I think that you may be able to help me with some information as we all work towards a common goal in affordable housing.
Well, together we all accomplish more. We know that. And so we're open to do whatever we need to do to ensure that families have safe, decent, affordable housing regardless of where it's located.
Just catching up on a few things. So as Michael said, the URA Act, Re- relocation Act, that's how they move people out of sites that have been deemed obsolete. That's what they're working through now. Back to your question, there are three hundred and seventy occupants as of June twenty twenty-one. I was happily looking at that yesterday. So they're about a half, a little over half on the way. Moving a hundred and sixty-three families out between now and October is not very likely. This is experience I had in Birmingham, similar apartment complex. December also not very likely. HUD is available to approve individual parcels being sold though to the airport authority as they're vacating. But the three hundred and twenty-three acres is not one parcel, it's multiple parcels. Those are vacated, they could be eradicated. As far as the vacation of property, we haven't wrote that to you yet because the attorneys are working on that negotiation. We're trying to get a discount on the Owens Track property at exchange, which is the Orange Grove property. It's twenty acres down off of Michigan Avenue, probably well worth more than the property over next to Orange Grove. We're working through that. So I'd ask Mr. Pierce to take a look at that and think of that if we're going back and forth on negotiations. The property they are selling, we're working with the airport authority to acquire about forty-five acres. It's on the fringe side, so south of, behind Maines, southeast Maines, trying to get about fifteen acres there. And then the Arlington Kellogg DeValle Triangle, we're trying to get about thirty acres there. We've already been approved. School board got four and a half acres on the other side of Kellogg, which is Arlington School. We're working through that for single families. Triangle piece is projected to be multifamily. The other's gonna be a mixture once we do phase two of Maines, which is about seven acres there originally, still ownership. As far as the HOPE program, the process is anybody that has a voucher is interested, they go to the counseling agency. The counseling agency sits them down, walks them through their credit history, makes sure they're viable candidate. They then go back to the housing authority, get the okay from the housing authority on the payment history. They come back to the counseling agency, they actually apply for a loan through them to the city. Minimum credit score is five eighty, very lenient on credit history, other than the twelve-month payment history with the housing authority. If they get that, the five eighty credit scores is almost a guarantee they're in. If we have a lot that's available for their family size, they can build on. That's the general process, how that works.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Jamie, it sounds like you guys already have some type of master plan in place for the Thomas James, RV Taylor area based on you calling out specific acreage. My question is, is you only call, you didn't even call out a hundred and fifty acres. He's talking about six hundred acres out there. So are we saying that the airport authority is gonna take everything from Duval Street all the way back to Eagle Drive? And from Michigan Avenue all the way over to, uh, whatever that, I can't even remember the cross street anymore. I don't go back there anymore. But you're saying that they're gonna take that much property and use it as industrial space?
So it's three twenty-three is the total acreage, plus or minus.
Three twenty-three.
A little bit's coming on over history, adjacent property owners. We're looking at getting at least forty-five for housing. Our housing could be a little more dense than what's currently there. There's a lot of wasted space in the middle of RV Taylor, you know, back in the twenties. So we'll go a little more dense to build up.
I understand all that. But again, are you telling me or am I hearing this? And maybe we need to have another meeting with the airport authority to see what the overall master plan is. Am I hearing that from Duval Street back to Eagle Drive and from Michigan Avenue over to Ann Street is going to be industrial property? Because that's what it sounds like.
That's my question.
Yeah, that's a question you're gonna have to ask the purchasers. We're not involved, we as the city are not involved in that part of the transact.
I understand, Mr. Woods, but we're talking about changing a historically residential neighborhood to a solid industrial mapped place now. I'm always careful when I use this word, but we're talking about true gentrification here. We're not talking about mixed-in space. So I'm not trying to point fingers or say whatever, but I mean, I'd just like to see what we're doing to make sure that that everyone in the city is equally yoked and have an equal opportunity here. And we're just not changing communities, you know, in a way that it's gonna overall change the scope or whatever. That property is on the line of Districts One and Two. So whatever happens there, happens in District Two also. So that's a major concern. District Two's boundary is Duval Street at Michigan. So that's a major concern for what happens in District Two right now. I mean, we need to know what the plan is there. I mean, and it sounds like there is a quasi-plan that maybe this council is unaware of, and I'd like to see it.
So I can tell you, based on the acreage we're looking at trying to get ahold of, and a lot of it is we get acreage and we put it out for our feet to develop, the way Maines worked out so well. With that acreage size, we are projected to put back way more units than we're at the three seventy, I said, where they're two years ago occupied. I think we're at five, six, something, so we're looking to put them back in that area, plus the Owens Track that we talked about.
One more thing, Mr. Woods, one more thing. With the redistricting map we passed, everything on the west side of Michigan Avenue, from Duval to Hotel Street becomes District Two. And you're telling me that we're getting rid of every bit of that that belongs to the Housing Board?
East side or west side?
West side.
West side, that's where we're trying to get at least fifteen acres on the back of Cardinal Place, west.
Mr. President, I'd like to request that at your convenience, we set up a meeting so that we can have a clear understanding of what's happening.
Yeah, Mr. Woods, what you about to say?
So this is a mistake we make all too often in these chambers. We speculate and talk about things. So this is a five-year-old, you know, going forward. This is all, this is pretty much public information. What I suggest we probably do is get the council members who are interested and walk you through what we have. Because if we make speculations here, you know, you have people who pick it up and they write things that aren't necessarily accurate. So to say that, you know, we're going to do one thing when the plan shows you something different. Once again, it's a five-year conversation. This is all public information. We'd be happy to show it to you and share it to you, share it with you, let you look at it and ask the questions with it in front of you once you've had a chance to digest the information. Last thing I want to say is, look, there's a, we mentioned that the vacation of the streets versus right-ofways, it's a two-part process. No, we're not going to take responsibility for the right-ofways dealing with public housing. But the vacations of the streets, that does have to come before you. And as Mr. Roberts said, we are looking at that, the lawyers are talking, and we're going back and forth. So more than happy to have your input on all of this political poshering. We know it has to go on. We understand that there are going to be, there's gonna be movement. And one thing that I think Mr. Roberts is conveying is that forty-five acres, we're looking to put housing back into that area where there are no people. On the Owens property, the fifty-plus acres, we're looking to purchase that from the Housing Board, we as the city, and place housing there, the developer, where there are no people. So we're trying to put people into the areas and keep infill housing continuously growing with these large swaths of property, not take people out of the community. I just want to make sure we dispel that and actually look at the plan before we guess and speculate and ask the wrong questions in a public forum and lead to an unnecessary frenzy.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds, and we're gonna have to move on.
Yeah, that's my simple ask, Mr. President, is that we're, you know, at the very beginning of our agenda, we're having a long drawn-out discussion about a topic that's very important to a lot of people. And I think if we want to discuss it further, we ought to reserve that for a committee meeting or something to that effect.
Yeah, this is also very important, Mr. Two, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Pierce, just make sure to get some things clear. Do you mind stepping back down here for a minute and thirty seconds, as early as possible? Could you just make sure that for the public can really understand why the Housing Board is really selling this property to the airport? And I understand that you had discussed it with some members, you know, electric officials and some residents, but a lot of people in the public has not, don't understand. And I'd just make sure that understanding get out, we're gonna have to move on.
Yes. Succinctly as I can, Thomas James Place and RV Taylor Plaza were allowed to go into major disrepair. And when I arrived nearly four years ago, two months on the job, I get a letter from HUD says that we have to take those units down. That it has passed what's called obsolescence, it was gonna cost way too much money to repair them. And so as a result of that, they had to come down. Now mandatory conversion means HUD is not gonna send any money to us to tear them down. We had to utilize our own resources to do so, which we didn't have that type of resource to do it. So I ultimately get on a plane, I go to DC, go to headquarters of HUD and said, are you guys really trying to shut us down? Because you know we can't do this. I just arrived, I just got here. But if you are, then I need to go back and be honest with both my board as well as our staff and our community that we're not gonna get any help, that you're gonna basically force us into insolvency, which ultimately they'll come in and take over the agency. Long story short, we met, they gave us, we talked through what some ideas could be to do this. The units are gonna come down, HUD's never gonna spend that kind of money to repair those units. And so as a result of it, that's how we got here. And so that's why that amount of acreage is coming online. As relates to Borkin Towers, Borkin Towers didn't, senior facility, eight stories, one part-time working elevator. One didn't work at all. It was so old that they couldn't get parts for it. And ultimately, we ended up having to relocate those families or those individuals out of there to other accommodations. And so Borkin Towers, given it as contiguous to such a large tract of land, you can't just leave them out there. Or if you rebuild something and do something there, they're isolated if they're surrounded by some type of development that doesn't work. And so obviously buffering comes into play with the planning commission, et cetera. So that's how we ultimately ended up there. It wasn't that we made a decision just to sell all this property and tear it all down because that's what we wanted to do. We were forced to take it down. And so in essence, we really were being forced into what's called repositioning, which is what we're doing now. If we were not a troubled agency and we were doing good, maybe we don't have this conversation at all. But because we were a troubled agency and weren't doing good and our finances were terrible, HUD said, you shall do this. They didn't give us an option. We had to go and do it. Fortunately, they pivoted and provided the resource to help us do what we needed to do to get to this point. And so that's how it ultimately happened. It has nothing to do with, now I know, you know, we hear the word gentrification and all those things. Very cognizant of that and don't want to be a part of doing anything like that. Change is inevitable, but we can do some things to ensure that individuals who want to live in the community can remain in the community. And so that's, I believe, what the councilman is saying is, hey, I just want to make sure people realize we're not trying to force them away. And so there are gonna be opportunities for individuals to stay there, just like what's happening at the former Maine site. There's gonna be more redevelopment that takes place. It's not going all industrial or anything like that. And I agree with Attorney Woods, as you sit down and you look at the plan, how it's evolved, I think you'll get a more of a bird's eye view of what this really looks like. And it's not, it's not what everybody might think it is.
That's why it really is important to have public meetings, you know, just as well. And I do agree with Attorney Woods also. But when the public is not really getting information and the truth, you know, they can go out there and speculate a whole lot, such as, you know, the airport coming in, kicking all the residents out, a bunch of warehouses, and the truth never comes out. I mean, sometimes a lie is way louder than the truth. And that's why it's very important to really just try to keep the community informed. Because again, at the end of the day, you know, the public just don't understand unless they actually come from someone of my flight yours who's the head person and everything. But thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President.
Uh, Carroll.
No, no, this needs to be done. So golly, no. Mr. President, I asked for a date certain, if you would. I need a date certain on a committee or a meeting. I've only been back here a year, eight months, and twenty-eight days. And it sounds like some of this information was done before I got back to this council. And I would like a clear understanding of what areas we're talking about that are being redevelopment, whatever's gonna be housing, whatever areas are gonna be industrialized. Because simply, if someone asks me, I want to be able to tell them the truth. And right now, I cannot do that. So if you could set a date certain for a meeting where we can sit down and go through this so that all of us have a clear understanding that we're not here when all of this started.
I'm gonna go ahead and publicly say this, Mr. Pierce, your schedule allows the first weekend, first Tuesday in October. That's right out the budget. And, you know, if we can make sure that the Housing Board get the invitation, also a committee meeting is set for that day. At least we have a month notice for the public to actually come in here. Because again, the public does have a lot of questions. And again, the first Tuesday possible in October. Madam Flurk?
See, I'll pick off Delorca. Good morning to the council and those in attendance today. My name is C. Pishaw Delorca. I am the Vice Chair of LGBTQIA Affairs for the Mobile County Democratic Executive Committee and the co-founder of Safe to Be You Foundation. First, we would like to express our disappointment in the recent mayor's decision to dissolve our LGBTQIA+ city liaisons. As we know, when we are not all represented at the table, we do not destroy the table. We invite those that are missing and pull up a chair for those that are not there. And if there's one thing that we know how to do in Alabama, it's how to use a folding chair. With that said, we would like the council to be assured that while the liaison positions have been dissolved, we remain steadfast in continuing those enduring and sustainable relationships with our city leaders as they relate to LGBTQIA+ affairs and the concerns of the entire community. My offices will be reaching out to each council member with the intent to schedule a one-on-one meeting in order to assure the continued efforts for and representation of Mobile's marginalized citizens within each of your districts and develop a plan moving forward that includes inclusionary practices and for meeting the needs of our community as a whole. It is our fervent hope and prayer that when Mobile records this period of time and our responses to minority groups that have already been systemically oppressed for far too long, that we all will find ourselves on the right side of history. We know that we can build a lasting legacy right here in the city of Mobile with leaders such as yourselves and build that legacy together. Bernice King said of this very vision best when she reminded us to continue to speak out against all forms of injustice to yourselves and others. And you will set a mighty example for your children and for future generations. With that, I thank the council for this time and greatly look forward to working together on the real version of one Mobile and not just Mobile's one percent. I appreciate your time and I can be contacted directly at unity@mobiledemocrats.org.
Question from the council. Thank you.
Rodney Tumer. Reverend Tony Allgood.
Reverend Tony Allgood.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Tony Allgood. I live at 214A Bussales Avenue, Mobile, 36607. Try Chair for the Alabama Poor People's Campaign, National College of Law, we're by our and I'm here just to address the whole issue of transparency and trust. Our concern is that it lessens the tape or leads to the family and to the attorney even before the investigation. And if the investigation was said, it may take months. This issue that dies out of, from the public view, people forget about it, they're going about their, their business. It's just another case. We're not gonna let this be forgotten. It's a very good thing and we all applaud it when the Mobile Police Department put on body cam. Some of us are old enough to remember back when it was when the police only served and protected a certain population and the rest of the population were not. And really, they were terrorists, I'm talking about here inside. We remember that, which we had body cameras back then. There has to be some resolution to this. You're not building up trust in the community, you're not building trust among the victims' families by doing this. Rumors get started, talk gets out, a certain narrative gets out there that may not coincide with what's on the news. Trust goes along with transparency. And that's what we're asking for today.
Thank you.
Christine Dallas.
I am Christine Dallas. I am Juwan Dallas' mother. And we are here for to get answers about my son's death. My son was killed by the Mobile Police Department on July the 2nd. Our family did not find out about it until July the 3rd, fifteen, sixteen hours later. We were not able to go to identify his body, they would not let us. They're telling us he had no property and he should not be dead. He should not be dead over an ID card that he did not have. We need to know what happened that night. His sisters, his brothers, myself and my husband is torn apart right now because we don't know what happened. I don't know, it's just, it's, it's just so wrong because Jay was a good guy. He was nowhere near supposedly burglary or trespassing. He was minding his own business. He was not doing anything wrong. And we need to find out, we need to know what happened to my son. Jay was a, a very good guy. You yourself has helped us with bookbag giveaways, Easter basket giveaways, dinners for the homeless, baskets for the elderly at Christmas, and Jay was a part of that. He helped us all. He was the centerpiece of our family and we need some answers. From my understanding, one of the cops who was there already had four police brutality charges pending against him. He should have never been out there. This is a white cop and there, from my understanding, were two black cops. And I think all three of these cops, uh, need to be held accountable for what they did to my son. Thank you.
Maria Dallas.
Maria Dallas, President.
Latanya, Latanja Thompson.
I'm here with my sister-in-law, Christine Dallas. And I know Mr. Woods say it's gonna take them.
Who's your full name?
Latanya Thompson, I'm sorry.
And I know we heard that it's gonna take a while, but, uh, we just here for answers. You know, she was denied seeing his body. So all she wants to know is what happened to her son. And I thank you.
Carrie Williams.
Karen Williams, President.
Bill Williams.
Bill Williams, President.
Dr. Roderick Esquire.
Attorney Roderick Van Daniel, Birmingham, Alabama. One of his attorneys for Juwan Dallas, Dallas and her family. Roderick Van Daniel, Attorney Roderick Van Daniel. I signed up to see, but we have, uh, a issue with police brutality, police misconduct in the state of Alabama, United States of America. And we have concerns here about the death of Juwan Dallas. And for one, we'd like to communicate with the Mobile, with the Mobile Police Department, with the family, Christine Dallas. The whole entire family is hurting right now. They in pain. No accountability, no transparency. But we would like to address the recording, the body cam video, the city's attorney saying they want to do an investigation, but the state of Alabama, for the Congress, the state, the state of Alabama, get a law for disclosure recording made by law enforcement, the Act 2023 dash five zero seven, HB 289, which, which will be enforced September 1st, 2023. So why do we have to wait months? We could have opportunity to do it in a week. We have to wait months. So who's gonna be the voice? City council? Elected officials for this community, Mobile County? Who gonna be the voice for the Dallas family? Who gonna stand up and say, City of Mobile, the Mobile Police Department? Release the video to at least Christine Dallas and her family so they can watch the video? We have a law in place, September 1st, 2023, HB 289, so this video can be shown to the family. America is the greatest country in the world, but we have laws. We have a constitution that stands up for our citizens, for their life and their liberties. We need a voice from the city leaders to stand up and say police brutality, police brutality, police misconduct would not be allowed. Again, finish with this.
Yes, Dr.
Who's gonna be the voice for the Dallas family?
Attorney Woods, could you spoke about this law by September 1st? Could you elaborate just on that for fifteen, twenty seconds, just for the public to just get a?
So sure, um, law goes into effect, uh, September 1st. However, there is a-
Hello, Dr. Dr. Yeah, Dr., thank, thank you so much.
So, but the same caveat and carve out for criminal investigations is still there. This law is not very different than the body cam policy that the city actually has in place now, um, almost, almost tracks it identically, identically. But, you know, even once the law passes, which it does not, I mean, even once the law goes into effect, there's still the carve out for an ongoing criminal investigation, which is what I'm talking to you all about now. It does not change, um, our path going forward, even when, even after September 1st. Once the criminal investigation is over, then we'll be, we'll, we'll go ahead and sit down with the family and their attorney and allow them to view the video.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, Ms. Ms. Woods, i- is that our rule or is that state rule?
That's a state law, a state law.
I've, I've been listening to this now for three weeks. For, for three, three weeks I've been listening to this. And, and, man, when you look in the rearview mirror right here and you look at certain segments of our population, there's an ongoing feeling of constant mistrust for the lack of information and for the lack of not being able to get information and for the lack of not being told. If that was your child, you want to know too. You want to know too. I mean, we, we keep looking in the mirror and we keep getting in the rearview mirror and we keep seeing the same thing for year after year and generation after generation. When is it that we found a way to get it so that we can build a system of trust right here? It's not so that we're not trying, it's because we're, we're not getting to it, man. I, I've heard this for three weeks now. There has to be a way. Because if it was my child, man, I'd be sitting at your door every day. You know, that's, that's, no, I'm, I'm not upset, I'm not upset, and, and you guys, please, no preaching, but there has to be a way because on the other side of things, people just see things sit in the same way, doing the same old constant thing, the same old rules, and they're okay. But when we look in the rearview mirror, it's a different story. It's a different story. So I'm gonna depend on you in the administration because I know that you can, because you've done some great things in the last two or three weeks from conversation, to find a way to help this family find a way forward so that they can find some type of closure and so that no matter what happens going forward, legal process, they will be in a position to deal with what's to come. That's all I'm asking.
So, Mr.-
Hello, hold up, artist. And, you know, I, I'd like to piggyback behind my colleague, and I hate to do that, I promise you I do, because I feel the pain of this mother. If it was my child, I would like to know. But I would pension everyone that's in here to contact your state legislators. They don't want to make up the law. If we make up the law, I mean, that would be fine, I would do it today for this mother to hear, but the state legislators is the ones, and I encourage each and every one of you all to do that. And again, I, I hate to do this because again, if I was, if it was my child, I would want to know too. But the law's got to stop, I mean, the law's got to be changed and it starts at the state. And again, I hate to do it, but I have to keep controlling this auditorium, especially this sense of suspicion.
Dr. Flurk.
Sharon Allen. Robert Clapton.
Hello, I'm Robert Clapton, 2016, 12, Mobile, Alabama, 36695. City Council, Mayor, Administration. Granted, I do agree, more some things change than what they say. And the same answer that I've heard since I've lived here in Mobile for the last nine years, the situation like this remains the same, it somewhat sounds like a broken record or is it pre-recorded? We must trust effective law enforcement, we don't have a choice. We have to trust effective law enforcement. However, we must also exercise our constitutional right to question law enforcement anytime when it seems that it's not protecting everyone due to race or ethnicity. I am here and I give my most heartfelt condolences to the family on behalf of Mobile branch of the NAACP. Because what we are speaking of is transparency, transparency and accountability. If there is no foul, no harm is done. If nothing has been done incorrectly or in error or accidentally showed a video, it's called instant replay. It's one of the things they use right now to settle controversies on the station, especially in athletic endeavors. Not only have been, uh, videos exonerating and forgiving for our law enforcement, but they can also be important safeguards, important, very important safeguards that are used to protect against unlawful arrest and excessive force by the perpetrators who forced to use it. Constitutionally, we have a right to free speech, we have a right to assembly, and we have a right to redress the government if we disagree. And from our basic instruction before I leave this earth, I find the word ask, A-S-K. But if I go to Matthew chapter seven, verses seven through eleven, and I look at that ask, A-S-K, it's it, ask, and you shall receive. Families ask, they have not received. I look at the S, it says seek, and you will find, and they have been seeking, but yes, they have found the answers. K is knock, unless you say ask the mouth, they have knocked, but they have not received answers. So please tell me my faith and my religious, and my religion is not in vain, because I do believe that we should ask, and the family is asking. And yes, foul outcome should not rest in perpetuity. Thank you.
Sylvester Cheatham.
Mr. President and council members, friends, my name is Sylvester Cheatham. I'm here to give you a picture of Jay Dallas as an individual, as a human being. Jay used to work for me, Jay used to work for me as a painter, and he was also a friend of mine. I got sick, cancer, heart problem, and that young man came to my house daily to see if I needed anything, to see if my wife needed anything. As I started to recover, he came to my house and just get on my last nerve, tell him, I told him, you got to go walk, you got to do this, you got to do this. Jay was a person that had feelings. Jay was a compassionate young man. You know, if, if you did something or you wanted Jay to stop doing something, all you had to do was ask him. That's the type of person he was. I asked him to go up a ladder one time and he told me, he says, Sylvester, you know, I'm afraid of heights. I said, well, Jay, you need to go on up there and, uh, I, I'll talk you through it. Jay told me, he said, go up there and show me how to do it, because I'm not going up there. That's the type of individual he was. Jay was a parent and person. Only thing we were asking as the council on this stage is just put yourselves in the, Christine and, and, and Phil's shoes as a parent, as an individual, as a human. And wouldn't you desire, wouldn't you have that, 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 that person- that question mark there that you need the answer, that only visual solid proof would give you that peace? That's all Christine wants. She just needs to see for herself, no matter which way it goes. She just wants to know, to give herself the peace and to answer the questions that's in their hearts. I thank you for the time. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, it's very challenging, the condolences to the mother, condolences to the family. You know, we are in a time where it's very challenging in our community and our state. I always said that Mobile, we can do it the right way. We have the opportunity to do the best thing and do it the right way. We see in our state of Alabama where federal people telling people that you gotta follow a certain map, and a group of people say, nah, we ain't doing it. How, how do you build trust when, when people not even following the laws they self that's been elected? So we have this trust issue, we have this trust issue, and I understand your concern, 'cause even as a, a black male, I have been pulled over multiple times for this drive. I remember when I was, um, when I first got my first job, you know, I'm from the community that light rims. I only got me some twenty threes on them, on my ride. I got pulled over, and I'm a school teacher, but they thought I was somebody else. We see these challenges. Body cameras was made to protect not just the police, but any person, any citizen as well. It's just, it shows the truth, shows what happened. I tell my kids all the time, and it's sad that we got to have these stories, but I, I tell them how to get, get prepared if they ever pulled over by the police officer, and, and that's hard to do, 'cause you shouldn't have to do that. But we know that in any situation, in any profession, you're gonna have bad, you're gonna have good. You got bad preachers, you got good preachers, you got good elected officials, you got bad elected officials. That's a part of, but body cameras is a way to protect everyone. Even when I was a school teacher, I said, put a camera in my classroom, 'cause I want everybody to see what I'm doing. It's there to protect. I don't know these guidelines, I don't know the rules that were stated, but I know if it's true, that we can show the body camera to the family after September the first, if that is the guideline, then I request that that family see that. I support that, I can't demand it. But just like our president of our council stated, that's why we have to talk to our state legislators and we have to talk to everyone else that's in these positions to make sure stuff like this don't happen. So I encourage, if that is a rule, then the family should be able to see it. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm just gonna end this up and say to the Dallas family, just keep on advocating, and don't just stop, you know, stop here, go all the way up to the state level, because if Tennessee can do it, Alabama is also gonna do it. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over twenty five zero three nine. Ordinance amending chapter twenty five garbage, trash, and litter of the Mobile City Code.
Motion to lay over thirty days.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over for thirty days.
Consent resolutions held over forty seven zero seven and forty eight seventy four. Declare the structure at eighteen twenty three St. Charles Avenue. Public nuisance and order demolish and fix the cost with demolition of the structure at twelve twelve Seneca Street.
So move.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions held over zero eight nine twenty. Approved purchase order to digital aerial solutions for processing and production of map contours for GIS. Twenty one nine twenty one authorized contract with Watkins AC Strunk Design for Site Improvements at Tricentennial Park.
Hello, Madam Clerk, if anyone would like to go ahead and ask, you may do so now. Pause the meeting for twenty seconds. Thank you.
Twenty one nine twenty one authorized contract with Watkins AC Strunk Design for Site Improvements at Tricentennial Park.
So move.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over twenty one nine zero one authorized contract with Volker and Associates for professional program management services for the city.
Um, so move.
So move.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion.
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, uh, motion to amend this contract uh, as submitted by Volker and Associates to the city clerk with the amendment stating that a mandatory fifteen percent of the entire contract for a total of six hundred seventy five thousand dollars will be provided for by Volker and Administration for DBEs and minority enterprises.
What was that dollar amount again?
Uh, six hundred seventy five thousand dollars is the total amount for all the contracts. So fifteen percent of the total is what it is. Not of this total, this is only a piece of it. The total was four point seven million, this is only a piece of that.
And...
Yes, that's correct, that is correct, is it not? That is correct.
Uh, Mr. President.
Oh, we got a motion, moving second, discussion, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Day.
Um, I, this does not increase the dollar amount of this contract, is that correct, Mr. Carroll?
That is correct.
Mr. Day.
Mr. Woods, is this, is, is this motion consistent with what we talked about at pre-council?
So I would say as a, as a total, yes, but you're not voting on the entire contract right now. So, yeah, so, so in theory, true, but you're not voting on the entire amount. So two things are accurate. One, it's not increasing the amount of the contract. Two, the language has been added, but remember, we're only going twenty five percent. That's the only caveat, is you're not voting on, yeah, yeah, twenty five percent design is what you're, what you're dealing with. So there's still another seventy five percent to be done, and there's still that four million dollar number that you're dealing with. We don't know that that won't increase, and I'm not saying for now, today. What I'm saying is, once you get twenty five percent of the design, you might see something else. I just say that. But two things, one, we are amending the contract, two, it does not increase the price of the contract in front of you. Just wanna make that clear.
And on the discussion on the...
Yes, yes, sir. So what we got before us is this contract for nine hundred forty five thousand, two hundred fifty nine dollars and forty seven cents. According to my calculation, fifteen percent of that is a hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred eighty eight dollars and ninety two cents. That's what we're voting on. Is, is a hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred eighty eight dollars and ninety two cents of this contract that's before us is to be devoted to... DB, DB...
You don't know if you'll go beyond.
Right.
You don't know if you'll go beyond twenty five percent.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Carroll.
Does the gentleman from District Two want to modify the amendment?
No.
To reflect the...
What, what, what everybody has said...
Mr. President.
What everybody has said...
Oh, oh, Mr. Carroll, after Mr. Reynolds.
This particular contract is for nine hundred forty five thousand dollars. The contractor of the city, I believe what we discussed in pre-council was that there was an agreement, amendment that has been put forward to the clerk's office that checks the box of fifteen percent, uh, DBE participation for this portion, for, for this contract that's before us.
Um, it's my understanding that the overall program was four point seven million, is that not correct?
That is correct, but what I'm saying is, is you all not voting on that today.
How much of the four point seven million have we, we've only allocated a total of four point seven million, correct?
That's correct.
So, but we have not used the entire capacity, is that not correct?
Right, this is just the first million.
This is the first portion of the four point seven million.
Exactly.
The amendment is, is that the fifteen percent will cover the total value of all four point seven million, no matter who gets the next portions of the contract, even though right now we're only voting on nine hundred forty five thousand dollars of it. If we only vote on this portion of it and don't cover the entire four point seven million, then we're back to square one if we don't have that caveat in place.
No, 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 let, let me, let me, let me give you, so, the, remember, we're only, we're not trying to, to stop you from doing fifteen percent on the seventy five percent that goes forward. What I'm saying is, that's not before you. You can't, we, we, we're not gonna contractually bind the city to four million dollars tied to this contract when we don't know if we're gonna go that far. So if, what we'll, what we'll need to do is...
Okay. On the back end... I, I, I hear you, I hear you, I, I hear you. I, I will accept the friendly amendment, knowing that we have only committed the four point seven million and don't have, and do not have all of it under contract at this time, and also to know that this administration has gone above and beyond to make sure that we go back, went back and corrected this and added DBEs and minority participation to the overall program. Uh, you know, I, I was gonna make these commitments after we passed this, but after the conversations we had over the last two weeks, it's a, a tremendous value to the city to know that we're gonna do business right, and we're doing business right where everybody is inclusive. Uh, this goes to the statement that the mayor likes to make on Mobile, and in this case, we're making Mobile a, a, a city where we're business friendly to everyone, including minorities and DBS. So, uh, thank you guys for, uh, uh, making this happen, especially after hearing two weeks of this from me. Uh, thank you to Volker for also making this happen after hearing me discuss this for the last two weeks. Uh, Mr. President, I do accept the friendly amendment, uh, and only addressing this in the nine hundred forty five thousand dollar contract today, knowing that going forward, we'll have it covered.
Mr. President.
Is this on the amendment or...
On the amendment. You got that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, um, my understanding, to be clear, it's for, um, amending section four point five by conclusion of the program, fifteen percent of the program manager's total compensation as defined by sub-paragraph four point one point one shall go to the disadvantaged business enterprise.
Yes.
Can we get a second?
Second. Mr. President.
Moving second, discussion, Mr. Reynolds.
I believe just procedurally to be correct, the original amendment that was offered needs to be withdrawn and then restated as the clerk has read it.
Well, I, I've accepted the correction, so the correction stands in place with my amendment. So if it needs to be withdrawn, then I would draw it and we'll accept the clerk's statement as the motion.
It's acceptable to amend, amend, amend an amendment, so if that's what Councilman Reynolds did, I, that's, I believe the president would be within his rights to construe it that way.
Move it.
Another discussion, Ms. Gray.
Yeah.
Are we voting on the amendment?
This is on the...
Voting on the amendment.
This is, this is the amendment, yeah. I think we understood the amendment the way Ms. Lambert just read it. That we are remending the nine hundred forty five thousand plus amount, uh, and it's only fif- and it is fifteen percent only of this, not of the entire, we're not voting on the entire project, we're only voting on this particular contract. And as the contracts come before us, then we will look to see the DBE requirements in each contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Another discussion on this amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go back to original, another discussion.
As amended.
As amended. Uh, thank you to administration, also Volker, and also Councilman Carroll. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Again, thank you all, this is a tremendous step for disadvantaged business enterprises in the city and also for minority contractors everywhere. Uh, shows that Mobile does business the right way and is a leader in our region.
Zero one nine twenty two authorized agreement for Brown Malava to provide tennis lessons and clinics for Parks and Recreation Department. Zero eight nine twenty three approved purchase order to CDW Government for iPad tablets and vehicle mounts for Mobile Fire Rescue. Zero eight nine twenty four approved purchase order to Census Corporation for insulated jackets and bib overalls. Zero eight nine twenty five approved purchase order to Gord... Uh, zero eight nine twenty five and nine twenty six approved purchase order to Gordon Companies for walk-through Christmas tree and for lighted snowflake street pole decorations for Parks and Rec. Zero eight nine twenty eight approved purchase order to Sun South for John Deere tractor. Zero eight nine twenty nine approved purchase order to Turner Wilson Fence for fencing for cruise terminal off-site parking. Zero eight nine thirty approved purchase order to VC Three Inc. for annual renewal of MIT data security backup and recovery services. Zero eight nine thirty one approved purchase order to Vertiv Corporation for annual renewal of maintenance services for MIT. Zero nine nine thirty two reallocate funds from general fund ring facilities to capital project fund civic center marketing to fund professional services contract. Zero nine nine thirty three transfer funds from general fund unassigned fund balance to City Hall overhead lab stadium for lab stadium fiscal plan. Thirteen nine thirty four authorized change order for Robert J. Baggett for joint replacement at the Convention Center Exhibit Hall. Twenty one nine thirty five authorized contract with Hadley Construction Specialties for window repairs at two hundred Government Street. Twenty one nine thirty six authorized contract with Double A Construction for re-roofing at the Mobile Police Department Third Precinct. Twenty one nine thirty seven authorized contract with, um, H.O. Weaver and Sons for twenty twenty two Pago resurfacing. Twenty one nine thirty eight authorized...
No, 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 no. Need to take that one separate.
Oh, okay. Twenty one nine thirty nine authorized contract with John G. Walker Construction for twenty twenty two Pago resurfacing. Twenty eight nine forty waive building permit fees for ten residential properties annexed into the city effective July twenty fifth. Thirty seven nine forty one approved license of, uh, Y Mule International Enterprises for Cruise Terminal Cruise Shop. Sixty nine forty two, nine forty three, and nine forty four authorizing settlement agreement and release of claims.
So move.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Twenty one nine thirty eight authorized contract with Waste Pro Alabama for residential garbage trash services.
Move to table.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced sixty four zero forty through sixty four zero forty three.
Per council rules, these ordinances will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero nine nine forty five through sixty nine seventy six.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Zero, zero nine nine four five transfer funds from District Two discretionary account to Parks and Recreation General Fund account to assist with the harvest giveaway at the Seals Community Center. Forty nine forty six, nine forty seven, nine forty eight, nine forty nine, and nine fifty are fixing the cost of demolition of structures at nine oh six Donald Street, one oh seven Randolph Street, eighteen fifty three Toolman Avenue, six oh four Ty-Tah Street, fifty fourteen Hare Road. Fifty eight nine fifty one declare Wees Noxious Group sixteen forty seven. Sixty nine fifty two approval award of special bonus to the Administrative Services Employee of the Month. Sixty nine fifty three, nine fifty four, nine fifty five, nine fifty six, nine fifty seven, and nine seventy six are determining appropriations to senior citizen services. Dearborn, uh, YMCA, the Jaguar Athletic Fund Inc., Mobile Symphonic Pops Band Inc., Community Services for Vision Rehabilitation Inc., and Little Flower Catholic Church serve a public purpose and improve payment.
So move.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions being introduced twenty one nine fifty eight through twenty one nine sixty.
Per council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced, zero one nine sixty one through sixty nine seventy one.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration on resolutions twenty one dash nine sixty seven and thirty one dash nine sixty nine, with the rest of these resolutions being laid over for one week.
Second.
Improper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Twenty one nine... Twenty-one nine six seven authorized contract with A. W. Mac Duffy Sanitation to provide residential garbage and trash services.
So move.
Second.
Improperly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Thirty-one nine six nine amend ATM Alabama Recycling Funds Grants Program Budget to establish third location.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one nine seven two call for public hearing to restore property located at twenty-two fifty-eight Airport Boulevard and two sixty-seven Seminole Street from R one and B two to B two, scheduled September twenty-sixth. Forty-one nine seven three call for public hearing to assent to the vacation of a portion of an alley located between ten-ten and ten-twelve O'Shea Road, scheduled September twenty-sixth. Forty-one nine seven four call for public hearing to consider a vacation of brighter way fee as a condition of the vacation of a portion of an alley located between ten-ten and ten-twelve O'Shea Road, scheduled September twenty-sixth. Forty-one nine seven five call for public hearing to consider the adoption of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four general fund, capital improvement fund, and Convention Center Fund Budget scheduled September fifth.
So move.
Second.
Improperly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings call.
Announcements, Mr. President. Council meetings will be, council meetings will be held in the County Assembly Room, or better known as the multipurpose room, beginning September fifth through October thirty-first, while upgrades in the auditorium are being put in place.
And also, I would like to state that our Public Service Committee meeting for this afternoon has been postponed to another day. District Four, Councilman Reynolds?
No announcements.
District One, Councilman Dean?
No announcements.
District Five, Councilman Day?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee of the Mobile City Council will meet today at at one o'clock in the ninth floor City Council Conference Room. This will be a working session to meet with the administration with respect to the fiscal twenty-twenty-four budget. No public comment will be taken. Next week at this meeting at ten-thirty a.m. on September fifth will be the public hearing on the proposed budget, at which time we will take public comment from anyone who wants to make a public comment. And that's next week at this meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
District Two, Councilman Carroll?
No announcements, Mr. President.
District Six, Councilman Wood?
No announcements.
District Seven, Vice President Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor mentioned North McGregor Avenue has opened. It was a soft opening this past Friday. There are a lot of groups and individuals to thank for making this happen. In particular, of course, the city staff, Moz, the project director for getting this project done about five months ahead of schedule, which, like they mentioned, is generally unheard of. But also, a big thanks goes to the Village of Spring Hill for their planning, their efforts for putting in the pedestrian crosswalk and for maintaining those and working this just about every day. Also, a big thank you has to go to Commissioner Connie Hudson with the Mobile County Commission because the funds were, came through her office is as a pay-as-you-go project back in twenty-eighteen. So it's been a long time coming to get this project complete. There are still some tweaks that have to be done, but it is really coming along and looking terrific. So thank you to everyone who was involved in making this happen. I know there were a lot of questions, a lot of issues that had to be taken care of. So again, the project manager, the city staff, Nick Amberger and team, and all of the residents who put up with a lot of frustration, a lot of cut-through traffic to make this happen. So I'm really grateful that we were able to make this come on, come on board and be done as quickly as we did. Also, I want to thank the administration and all of the residents who turned out last week. It was my first official annexation meeting with all of the new residents to learn more about all of the things that are coming online for residents. It was great to see so many from my neck of the woods in Kings Branch and Orchard Estates. And of course, if there are any questions from our newly annexed residents about the city services and when they will come on board, or just anything else they need, we are always open. My cell phone is available, newsletters come out every other week. So if there's anything that, you know, any of the residents in Kings Branch or Orchard Estates need, I'm always available and happy to work with them. And just thank you, team, for all you're doing to bring all of the information to the newly annexed residents of the city of Mobile. So thank you.
Anything from the administration? Mary Smith?
Motion to adjourn.
Improperly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.